They saved themselves to be applying. Alright, let's call the council meeting to work. We'll start with our pledge.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Evening, everyone, and thank you all for coming. I believe we have some minutes to approve from our March 20th workshop. Should've had that in your package.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the workshop.
I'll second.
Motion made by Kyle, seconded by Jackie, to approve the March 20th, 2019 workshop meeting minutes. All in favor or indicate by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. And we have regular council meeting minutes from March 25th.
I'll make that motion to approve those minutes.
Motion's been made by Lynn, and seconded by...
I'll second that.
Donnie, to approve the March 25th, 2019 regular city council meeting minutes. All in favor indicate by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Do we have any additions to the agenda?
I do not have any at this time.
Okay. Would entertain a motion to approve the agenda then?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda for the evening.
I'll second.
Motion's been made by Donnie, and seconded by Jackie, to approve the agenda for this evening. All in favor indicate by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Building permits. Jim, we have a bunch.
No, three, several, and they're pretty straightforward and simple.
Good.
Jim Talbert, 107 Memorial Drive, wants to add a shed, a little shed, eight by 10 foot, behind the little shed he has now. He's right in the middle of the spot there next to his house. It's not an issue at all, I didn't think. And then Legion Ballpark, want to make a shed also. A movable shed, or just a small shed that would go away when they need to build a building. If I understand correctly, they're looking at sharing the bathrooms down there. But they need a shed for now. 10 by 12 foot shed. Could be made by Bob's lumber. So we don't have any problem with that, as I was saying either. And then Wesley Trapp, at 212 Edward Street North. He put in a concrete permit last year to replace his driveway and apron. And he just didn't get it done, and he just wanted to add steps this year. Fellow that's doing it said he should really replace the steps also. I remember we looked at it, and they were falling apart. It was a reasonable thing to do. And I don't know if he had to even put a permit in. I would say he could've just, you know, took that as part of the project. But there's three little steps like that. So I told Nicole that if you consider that part of the last one, you don't have to pay for another permit for that. We have two other requests, just for information. One was for John Smoothie to plant some sunflowers on that four acres that's north of his shed and his spot.
Tom.
Tom. I was gonna say, I didn't know.
Sorry. And then we said that's, right now it's zoned, it's low, whatever, just farmland now. So it's just like across the road from us. He wants, for people to see what sunflowers look like. And then, we said that's not an issue. Then Dan Losheider wants to hang up some temporary signs for the church for that raffle that's going for a few weeks. I guess we let these kinds of things go on. So I said, just ask Nicole to call him and say it's okay to do this.
We'll look for a motion to approve building permits.
I'll make that motion for James Talbert, Wesley Trapp, and Pierce Legion Ballpark.
Motion made by Lynn, seconded by Kyle, to approve the three building permits. All in favor indicate by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Next item on the agenda is we need to reschedule a council meeting coming up. It's originally scheduled for Monday, May 27th, Memorial Day. The reason we need to reschedule it this far in advance is we are also going to be adding some workshops, potentially that evening. So I guess the question is, what night do we want to go with? The 28th is on Tuesday, the 29th is on Wednesday. Personally, I would prefer the 29th, it's a Wednesday. I have some conflicts on Tuesday.
I prefer Wednesday.
You might have a conflict or two, too. What's that?
I prefer Wednesday.
Okay.
Wednesday's fine with me.
Yep, it's fine with me.
At 7 o'clock, okay?
So I'm gonna make a motion.
I'll make a motion to reschedule the May 27th council meeting to May 29th at 7:00.
I'll second.
Motion made by Kyle, and seconded by Jackie, to move the May 27th meeting to Wednesday, May 29th at 7:00 p.m. All in favor indicate by stating aye.
Aye.
Thank you, guys. With that, we have an EDA agreement with RTO. And I'm going to, at this point, read the letter of agreement. Not the letter of agreement. The letter of agreement is in your package.
Yes. Before you do that, Dave, while we're queuing, so I'll sit on that side.
Okay.
It's coming.
Don't get lost. Okay. So, but you do want me to read the resolution?
Uh, no, we have to approve the agreement first, and then we'll schedule the public hearing.
Everybody's had a chance to look at the agreement? Any questions on it? Any questions for RTO?
I would say the EDA worked pretty, pretty well with RTO. We did, uh, work together on drafting the agreement, and Jason Murray did a good job.
Went pretty smooth, yeah.
From the city's standpoint, we're just agreeing to set up the district, correct?
Mm-hmm. And agreeing to the terms with the district.
So I would entertain a motion to...
I'll make that motion.
Motion is made by Lynn to approve the EDA and RTO agreement.
I'll second.
Seconded by Jackie. All in favor indicate by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Now we'll get back to the resolution of the meeting.
Yes. So, I don't know if you want to discuss what day you want to hold the public hearing. It has to be either the May 28th or later.
Okay.
So I would suggest the 29th since the meeting's out there would be at 6:30.
Hold it right before. And the reason for that, Nicole, is because of the 45-day...
Yes, so you need 30 days to notify the school, and 30 days to notify the county. You need 45 days to notify the district commissioner. And that would bring us right to...
And we have, if we'd have had a meeting on May 27th, we couldn't have done it that night. So, worked out.
Yeah, it's kind of perfect, yeah.
This case. Was that for May 29th at...
6:30.
6:30? That hour before? Is that your motion?
That's my motion.
I'll second that.
Motion's been made by Donnie, and seconded by Jackie, to hold a public workshop or public hearing on Wednesday, May 29th at 6:30. All in favor indicate by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Now I can read the resolution?
Yes.
Normally, this is Kyle. Resolution number 04082019-1. Calling public hearing on the establishment of a tax increment financing district number 1-11 within municipal development district number 1, and the adoption of a tax increment financing plan relating thereto. Be it resolved by the city council, the council of the city of Pierce, Minnesota, the city as follows. Public hearing, this council shall meet on Wednesday, May 29th, at 6:30 p.m., 2019. To hold a public hearing on the following matters: The proposed establishment of tax increment financing district number 1-11 within municipal development district number 1, and b) the adoption of the tax increment financing plan relating thereto pursuant to and in accordance with the Minnesota statutes, section 469-174, 2, 469-, or dot 1794, inclusive as amended, the Act. Notice of hearing, filing of program and plan. The city administrator is hereby authorized to cause a notice of the hearing sustainingly in the form of a tax ear to as dibbit aid to publish as required by the Act in place a copy of the proposed tax increment financing plan on file in city administrator's office at City Hall, and to make such copies available for inspection by the public. The motion for the adoption of the foregoing resolution was duly seconded by council member Jackie. Hand upon vote, being thereof the following voted in favor. All members voted in favor, and nobody abstained. Whereas, whereupon the resolution was declared duly passed and adopted. Do we have to approve the resolution now?
Yes.
So I'll entertain a motion to approve the resolution.
So I'll make that motion again.
I'll second.
Motion made by Donnie, and seconded by Jackie, to approve the resolution. All in favor indicate by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
Kyle under, who will abstain?
I'll abstain, yes.
Kyle has abstained. Okay. I think Kyle can rejoin us now. Your hire back. Make sure you dot that off as paid.
Two seconds.
Next item on the agenda is we need to call the public hearing for planning and zoning ordinance updates. At our last workshop, we went through with Jim some of the planning and zoning updates that we had. Nicole feels she needs until that time, until, to get them all done, because there are quite a few changes, and for us to review them when they're done. So, in thought process, it would be good to do it that same evening, maybe? Like at 6 o'clock? If that works for everybody, being we're tied up here anyway?
Pretty soon we'll just be here for lunch.
So this would be on the same...
Of only Wednesday.
May 29th.
Yeah, at 6 o'clock. So we'd have a meeting at 6:00, take a little recess, meeting at 6:30, take a little recess. Or at 7:00.
I'll make the motion to do the planning and zoning public hearing at 6 o'clock, May 29th.
I'll second.
Motion made by Lynn, and seconded by Jackie, to have the public hearing for planning and zoning ordinance updates, May 29th at 6:00 p.m. All in favor indicate by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Golf course wages, employee wages. A lot of... Good evening.
Including your packet, we're...
Thank you, guys.
For the increases, we've got four employees returning to the clubhouse this season. Amy Tholm was our manager last year. She served at $14 an hour. Park Board recommended an increase of $0.61 per hour. So that would put her wage for 2019 at $14.61. Just a note, too, that's on the low end for our clubhouse manager when we did the study.
I was wondering how to go.
Oh, yeah. This is her second year returning. The high end of the clubhouse managers was in the 19... 19s.
Do you remember that range, what that range was?
It was 19 something, 19.
And starting at 14, 14. Oh, that was the, that's right on, okay.
She has been seasonal, we did pay unemployment, you know, through the winter on that.
Oh, we did?
Just to add to that, I think, Donnie, if you have anything on the program, Bob, just let me know. But I think we talked about addressing this, this summer, as the summer went on. I'll probably want to work with her down there if we somehow make her a full-time employee or continue with her as a seasonal employee, those kind of things. So, I'll definitely figure something out there.
She does a great job, and from the employee retention point of view, it's going to be tough to retain employees because they're only going to work seven months out of here, and then get out of the place. There's multiple ways to do things, but it's going to be a tough year last year. So I don't know if we want to do this one at a time, or what do you want to do?
I think we should do a lot together.
Okay.
I'm gonna backtrack on Amy's, though. I do really think that is low, given the duties that she's required to do.
I agree.
I agree with you 100%.
And if we want to retain somebody of her caliber and not look to have to re... I mean, I know she's agreed to come back, but doesn't mean she won't walk anywhere at some point.
Right.
It's a lot.
She does a great job.
She does.
And that's partly why I say I think we need to address this sometime here.
We just can't forget about her, is all I'm saying.
Yeah.
I mean, it's just, that's, like you said, that's on the low end, and she was...
I mean, that's almost, I mean, not to... I just think that's like almost, you could go work at the building and almost make up it. I just don't know.
Maybe attach it to your next park board meeting, and address it sooner rather than later. Is all I'm saying.
I would, I agree 100%.
Okay. Duly noted. And I agree with Jackie a minute, though. I don't know where you're at. Kind of where you're at, but that's just my opinion.
I mean, if it was me, it would be like 16 at a minimum.
I think we need to be careful because the golf course is one of the things that we know we struggle a lot.
And that was part of that.
Yeah.
That was part of...
Part of the big, part of that is the curse in wages.
And that was part of that discussion.
We looked at that at the finance committee meetings. I think we need to be careful before we just dole out big raises because that certainly affects it. I'm not saying she's not worth it by any means, but I think we need to be careful.
Part of it was weather-related last year.
Yes, we lost a month of April.
Yeah.
Which we're losing.
We're losing again.
Not doing so again.
Michelle Harold was at 10:50 last year. We would like to call her Lead Cook. And she does a tremendous amount of management down there. And she's going to do a lot of the training in the kitchen as well. So we look to bump her to 12:50 an hour. She's going to be pretty limited on her hours this year as well. Matia Moore, 11:50 last year, 50 cent raise to 12 dollars an hour. Sabell was at 10:50, we can move her to 11. Nikki Hoizen, Ryan Hoizen will not be here in 2019.
Do you want a motion on the clubhouse separately?
Sure.
The grounds crew separately?
Sure.
So I would entertain a motion then to approve the clubhouse wages, or unless there's further discussion.
Make a motion to approve the clubhouse raises as listed.
Motion been made by Kyle, and seconded by... I'll second that. Donnie, to approve the clubhouse wage increases. All in favor indicate by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Grounds crew.
Grounds crew, Bob Burney ran the Roughmore last year. He started last year at 10:50 an hour. Bob goes above and beyond. He's going to be hauling a lot of the stuff around town this year. Just, he's a solid employee and does a lot more than one.
You've actually had Bob working up?
Not a lot. He's going to be doing a lot of it, I'm telling you.
He will be doing a lot.
But even today, he was on the course as well. He can handle weight more than a high school kid. So from 10:50 to 12:50 an hour, and I guess I would kind of see that as a cap. And then you just do a quarter here, or something like that. Alex Borster, 10:50 to 11:00. Nick Shaw, $10 to 10:50. Doug Walken, $10 to 10:50.
Okay. Questions on the grounds crew?
I think the motion's to approve the wage increases for the grounds crew for the clubhouse.
I'll second.
Motion made by Lynn, seconded by Jackie, to approve the pay increases for the grounds crew down at the golf course. All in favor indicate by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
I got my hires, you want me to do that now? Or just...
Yeah.
Why don't we do it right now? We're here, standing with us.
So I had Amy conduct the interviews. We've actually got five people to hire tonight. Recommend you to hire. Versus Candace Hamilton, she's over 18. 10 years' experience, we could start her at 10:50 an hour. Lydia Trembo, she's my daughter. She would start at $10 per hour, and then after she turns 18, which will be in August, she would be at the 10:50 an hour. Ryan Kirschbaum is 17 as well, and she would have to be working with somebody that's 18. She would start at 10. She will turn 18 sometime this summer, then she would roll to 10:50. Michael Warchester, he would start at 10:50 an hour. He is over 18, and he's got another job, but he can pick up shifts. And these are all part-time jobs where we just kind of save up shifts and work, and it kind of fills in the rest. And then Kami Otman is 16, and she would start at $10 an hour. Part of the hiring of 16 or under 18 people is trying to keep them for two, three, four years, trying to keep them through their college years. Start when they're 16, dishwashing, cooking, cleaning.
They can't work alone because they can't handle alcohol, they can't handle beer.
Yeah.
So they would be there on the nights when, or the Saturday tournaments, when there's somebody else involved in the clubhouse, and you need somebody to help, you know, do things when they're maybe doing the cooking or whatever. So there probably not to be a ton of hours available to those people. But one of the thoughts and desires was that those people would continue to stay with us, and to come back when they're 18. It's an effort to, we've had, we've really struggled to get employees down there. So, I think this is good. This looks more encouraging than what it did a month ago.
Yeah, and we're still kind of pushing, and we're still, they're still opening, especially with the 18s.
Right. We're not necessarily closing the hiring, so if anybody knows of anybody, send them down. And they can just stop in and see Amy, have for an application, and go from there. So, we're looking for a motion to approve these hires.
I'll make a motion to approve the hires.
Motion been made by Jackie to approve the five new hires Bob has presented. Seconded by Donnie. All in favor indicate by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Okay, anything else?
The commercial club meeting down at the clubhouse a week ago, I thought that went pretty well, most people were down there, but I think we hosted fairly well, and it was... It was a very good turnout, but I missed it compared to other times.
Um, I would, I would say it was probably a little light for them. But, you know how those are, they're sometimes... Hit miss, and sometimes a lot of people, sometimes not so much. I thought it was a little lighter than most, but it is what it is. It's, I mean, people come when they come.
I really like the topic, the Eric and the businesses, and how to keep them safe, and just...
Yeah, and Amy's going to be going around promoting menus, you know, uptown, to try to get that going a little better this summer, so...
Okay.
Part of the whole idea. Covers will be cold tomorrow morning, and cold.
So it's all Thursday.
Thursday?
If it weren't for the snow, we could've opened this weekend.
Oh, for sure.
Yeah.
Really? But it was actually...
Could've, yeah.
It's kind of day by day.
Yeah.
Depending if we get...
Depending on what happens.
Yeah. But if we get any rain, and like clear weather, maybe we'll do something. Yeah, we'll hit the Facebook and everything like that, that's all.
Yeah, that's all good. Okay, thanks, Bob. Bob, do you have anything else for the...
There are no more.
Okay. All right, thank you much, sir. City Lights partnership amendment approval. That is our company that we've worked with in the past, basically changing danger today.
And they got bought out as well.
They got bought out, yeah.
Yeah.
It's a, it's our locating company, was our locating company.
Yeah, so we hired them to locate our electric lines. If somebody calls, we'll locate them.
And they got, and that company was?
Used to be City Lights.
City Lights. And they got bought out by?
USIC.
Yes.
USIC, okay. So, we need a approval to partnership with them.
Yes, and we would associate our current contract with the City Lights until it's the end of 2019.
Yep. I'll make the motion to do the amendment and extend the contract for City Lights.
I'll second that.
Motion's been made by Donnie, seconded by Lynn, to continue the partnership with City Lights, or with USIC formerly City Lights. All in favor indicate by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Pass unanimously. Okay, small cell facility aesthetic policy. Does Kyle have a policy to read?
No, not to read aloud, I mean, I think we need to...
The policy was in your...
I sent it in an email, yes.
It was in a different email than...
It was in a different email than your...
It wasn't finished in time, but I knew it was coming. I knew we would get it done in time, but not...
A little background on all that. This started over two years ago, or around two years ago. Ryzen Wireless wants to hang some...
Cellular notes.
Cellular notes, what are they called?
Cellular notes.
Cellular notes on some of our poles. We didn't want them to, it doesn't matter what we want, they have the state law on their side. They can come in and put them pretty much where they want. We had suggested they put them on our siren pole.
They can put them kind of wherever they want, within the right-of-way.
Within the right-of-way.
Or they can have separate agreements with people who own the property, such as the school, they can have their own agreements with them. But in the public right-of-way, they kind of are able to do what they please. Unless you have these resolutions that we've put forth to help restrict them a little bit. So we have a little bit more say as to what they can do.
And we need to get these approved by the 15th of the month, and this is the last time we're together. So that's why we need to go through that. So...
Does anybody have any questions? I will say, in speaking with Bob this afternoon, we made a quick change to number five. It was just a small cell, a small wireless facility and other wireless equipment allocated or attached to a pole in the right-of-way must be placed a minimum of, there was 10 feet, which you use at 15 feet. So it would be up higher, so it's out of your direct... I mean, just due to our specs of our light poles, they're a little bit larger than what we were...
So it's 15 feet off the ground, rather than 10?
Correct, yeah.
I make a motion to approve the policy.
Motion made by Jackie to approve the small cell facility aesthetic policy.
I'll second.
Seconded by Kyle, all in favor indicate by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Last item, schedule a workshop. We've got a number of issues I think we need to talk about again. It keeps growing. So we were looking at April 29th, which is the last Monday of this month. We all done, Kyle will be all done with his taxes. Hopefully, we can get through the summer without doing too many more workshops, but I think that would be a good date to go through a lot of things.
I believe that works for me. My wife did mention something about she may have something in Wisconsin that we would all maybe go to. But I don't know if that has ever happened. So we can schedule it. If I know it wasn't, I can always, I can just call in.
Okay. What time works for everybody? Lynn, Kyle, you guys are doing two there, then you can make five, right?
I can if I have to, 5:30 is better.
5:30 better?
5:30 is better.
5:30 is better for me.
5:30, okay. 5:30 is fine. Okay. So I would entertain a motion for that.
I'll make a motion to schedule a workshop for April 29th at 5:30.
Motion made by Kyle and seconded by Lynn to schedule a workshop for April 29th at 5:30, all in favor indicate by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chris is not here tonight, Bob was completed, and Eric is not with us tonight. Takes us to you Nicole.
Bob had something.
You have one more thing sir.
Oh.
Finger knee, I like to say that. So we had a contract cleaner last year, Grace Heskey, she actually cleans up here at the library as well. And she did some work on the clubhouse campground. So we would like to increase her wage from $12 an hour to $13 an hour, she's a contracted employee, not an employee in the city.
She's been with us for a while.
She's been with us for a while, she actually cleans the shower hosts and then the bathrooms and the shelters as well. Saturdays, Sundays typically, the guys can take care of it during the week, but it just helps to kind of take them, that chore on the guys' weekends.
Tough time to find somebody Saturday, Sunday mornings.
Absolutely, and for $13 an hour, that's a good value.
So we're looking for a motion to approve that.
I motion to approve that.
Motion's been made to approve the cleaning ladies salary increase. Motion made by Jackie. I'll second it. Seconded by Donnie. All in favor indicate by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Anything else Bob? We're running out of chances.
I'm done.
Nicole.
You say that, no.
I don't have too much to update you on, I've been working with the EBA and RTO, getting that tip stuff set up, moving forward with all of that. I will be starting to work on the planning and zoning ordinance. What else have I been working on? The cell phone policy, that kind of came up last minute on Friday, so they kind of gave us 15 days to notify us on the first, so that came up. Other than that, just kind of working on some previous workshop stuff, looking into cell phone policies, social media policies, all that fun stuff, so supposed to be coming in in the near future, whether that's at a workshop or something like that. Also, kind of been looking into, I meet, every other month, I meet with a clerks group down in either Wake Park, Sartell, Rice, and Royalton. And we just recently discussed some credit card stuff. And we're talking with Bob, I think that'd be really beneficial for Miss Amy, so that'll be coming towards the next workshop to further discuss and put in a policy in place and see what we can do moving forward, so.
So we don't take credit cards down at the clubhouse right now?
No, as far as, so right now, if there's any charges, employees have to put it on their personal credit cards or debit cards. And when you get stuff up there, a couple hundred dollars, it starts to add up and then only doing claims so many times.
And that's not the right way to do it.
So getting, for our city employees...
Buying for resale, buying for a kitchen.
Sure, so having something for them to buy stuff.
Yep, but before we can purchase their credit card, we need to have a policy in place, so...
And when you order a lot of things, they'll want a credit card number, that type of thing, so that they can order and, but Nicole's going to work on the policy.
Yep.
And then we'll talk about hopefully at the workshop, right?
Yep.
Will be one of the items on the agenda?
Yep, we should hopefully have that in place before the 29th.
Do we still have a Costco membership card down?
Well, not Costco, oh, Sam's.
Sam's Club. And do they have a credit card that goes along with that?
I don't believe so, no, it's just the membership. Unless she's got her own personal one that she uses, but I don't think so.
I'm not sure.
Yeah, I don't think so.
Anything else Nicole?
No, I should need them.
Treasury report.
Oh, I'm sorry. The check with balance, balance of the statement on March 31st was $1,013,699.
Motion to approve the Treasury's report. I'll make the motion. Motion to approve the Treasury's report by Donnie, seconded by?
I'll second.
Kyle, all in favor indicate by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Claims. Just two and a half.
So, in this one Nicole, there, well, I think one thing to note that I, is maybe new this year that I see now is the fact that we now have to pay RIPS, right? So that will increase probably our monthly amount, so if we were used to 200, it's going to be more, right?
Yep, and those are kind of washed in, washed out, so whatever the amount comes in, I pay that exact amount out and I'm making sure that those amounts are...
Right, so just our, our income or the revenue in is up, but this is just the claim, so I just wanted to make sure that that's on it, right?
Yes, thank you.
And then there was other, there was one more big bill under total Minnesota Power, it's $84,621 to the Pierce School, is that just the electric?
No, that would be their maintenance for their project going on Bob?
That's their electric line relocation, that would need it.
Okay, so that was something that we...
We get reimbursement for that.
Okay, so that's a, that's like a one-off thing in this month too.
Are we getting a 100% reimbursement on that or are we getting? We are getting 100%. Should be 100%.
None of my time is included, but whatever Minnesota Power charges the city, we charge back to the customer.
Okay, that's cool.
To our customer.
We sent out that invoice, we just haven't received it yet.
Okay. That was it for me, so I...
Any questions on the page?
Anybody else? Only a motion to pay the bills to the tune of $275,994.30.
I'll second that.
Motion been made by Kyle, seconded Lynn to pay the bills. All in favor indicate by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Anybody have anything else?
Just a reminder, because I'm looking at my calendar, the 27th of April is city cleanup. We need to make sure we have enough people there to work that Saturday morning.
Will Toby come out of retirement to continue by that?
You're going to call him and ask him?
He said he'd be available whenever we need him.
Yeah, he did say that. I think we have that on videos.
Somewhere.
I think I can make that. It is good to have at least two to three of us up there, if anybody else can make it.
I can probably make it, I can get my mom to watch the kids.
Okay. A lot of it is, you know, helping other people on all things, I know Lynn, you handled a lot of money last time, so.
Once in three years, I can.
Okay, if, if, if...
That's good.
If you guys may do that, that's good. What's that?
Nothing.
Yeah, thanks for reminding, Lynn, that's a good, good point, that's something we should be aware of.
Eight to 10, correct Bob?
Yes.
Eight, 10 AM.
Eight to 10, right.
Eight to 10, at the Pioneer Elementary.
Pioneer Elementary. Is that going to be a problem with their construction though?
Good thought.
Well, they'll still be in school, so it shouldn't matter.
I mean, they still have the parking lot available.
Yeah. Yeah, we'll even get in and out of that parking lot.
I'll touch base with them and make sure.
Is the circle of the parking lot still there?
Yeah.
It's a week after school, George said then it will be gone. April 27th, it's still there.
Because that works very nice where they can come in and do the turnaround and mine right up. I'll watch this. Okay. Anything else?
I'll make the motion to adjourn, because you tell me I have to do it sitting in this chair.
Motion been made to adjourn by Donnie, seconded by?